Good morning. Going to Monday, you got a, you got a list going today?
Yeah, we have a large, large list today. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
So we'll start with the prosecuting attorney's financials. And then I'll turn it over to Ryan in case you have any questions for Ryan.
Okay.
On the prosecuting attorney, their first presentation is their general fund for their office. And this is. They, they're a general fund, therefore they don't have revenues sufficient to cover all of their expenses. They're supported by the, the general fund revenues that come from elsewhere. Property taxes, sales tax, et cetera. So they have brought in just a little bit over sixty-eight. Something's not right. Are my numbers are not jiving? Looks like intergovernmental. They have thirty-one thousand they've brought in so far this year and we don't have a budget, budget for that. I may have to go back and look at this sheet. Give you a revised one because something's not working. My totals are not, not equaling the actuals and my budget says one sixty-seven, but I only have miscellaneous printed on there. So. But when I looked at this or reviewed this, I don't see any issues with their revenues for this year so far. I think they're gonna, they're gonna sufficiently make budget. On their expenditure side, they, their largest expenditure is personnel, a little over three million dollars. Actuals through April fourteenth is six hundred and sixty-five thousand. And as far as trend lines, they're a little bit below our target for the, for the three months. And then on supplies, they have budgeted fifty-four thousand and they've already spent twenty-six thousand. Still on target there. On their services, they have a budget of three hundred and ninety-six thousand and they've spent two fifty-seven, but that's because most of that is our internal services, which are all billed in the first quarter. And so that's why it's showing their over target on services. But it's due to the timing of our internal services payments. So like I said, most of that is internal services, two hundred and nine thousand of the two fifty-seven is internal services. Next slide. Oh, and as far as personnel, they have budgeted, we have a budget of filled positions of twenty-six. And then they have open positions. They have about three open positions currently, pretty much on track with last year. At this time, they had open positions, almost three. They have a couple of part-time.
Yeah. What, what are the open positions, Ryan?
On the support side. I'm fully staffed with FTEs. I have a part-time position that's been available since last year. Last year, we had the same individual working part-time for actually quite a few years. I don't recall specifically, but over a decade. She moved into a full-time position doing our discovery. So getting everything from spillman, body cams into the system and then the appropriate cases. So the part-time position that she was working, we have not filled. We had a new, we've had two new attorneys start in the last month or less, one last week, one about a month ago, which leaves us technically with one full-time attorney position available. At this point, we're not necessarily proactively trying to fill it. We do have an individual who was a full-time attorney for us for a couple of years. Left Multnomah County, quit there after two weeks, wasn't his cup of tea. And I was like, hey, you want to work three days a week here? He's like, yes. So we have him working three days a week. And then my former chief, Tom Leducer, who retired end of twenty twenty-three. He's handling kind of some special appeal issues kind of on a contractual basis. So. I don't think at this point we're eager or needs, probably not the right word, but not eagerly trying to fill that last FTE position because we do have some part-time individuals that I guess in the grand scheme of things costs significantly less than our full-time FTE and are covering things that we need covered. So.
Thank you.
I would also make the comment that we're probably more fully staffed now than we have been since COVID. So. Been pretty constant. We've had multiple openings and it's been pretty difficult for
Yeah.
For four years or so.
Case loads. How are we doing there?
Superior Court felony case loads last year were down a bit. Part of that's kind of the fallout from essentially the legalization of drugs to bumping it down to a misdemeanor. District courts are gross misdemeanor, misdemeanor last year was up. Not horribly, but maybe one to two hundred additional cases, which can also kind of be somewhat tied to the Buxa possession. Although a lot of those bucks of possessions are municipality cases, city along view, the municipalities. So the sheriff's office, state patrol does give us some of those, but not near the numbers that your city police agencies do. Juvenile caseload has been down since COVID, but I. It was up last year from the year before, but it's probably still a little below what we were pre-COVID. Some of that can be tied to school policies and/or a couple of years ago, the legislature passed laws that law enforcement cannot question juvenile suspects related to a crime without them first calling the attorney hotline, at which point the advice is don't talk. So. The investigation of some juvenile crimes has been hampered by that. So.
Yeah. Any backlogs or things moving through on a timely manner?
On the what matter?
Any backlogs or cases moving through on a timely matter?
I think for purposes of. I'd like to keep COVID in the past, but I think we did. There was a lot of backlog created from COVID court closures, virtual court, you know, stuff like that. I think compared to perhaps a lot of counties throughout the state, we were able to. I'm not saying we had a decent amount of backlog, but I don't think we dealt with near the backlog of some other counties. So I say for purposes of where we're at right now, we're pretty good.
Okay.
Back charges, which are cases that are referred to our office for review and potential charging. You know, we don't have a bunch of those sitting around. They're all either charged or sent back for further information or declined. Each individual DPA might have a hand, you know, some to review, but not like what we were a year, two years ago.
Okay.
So I think for purposes of things getting through our office, we're doing pretty good, really good right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Ryan, do you have any idea as far as that legislation on the caseload goes? Where are we at with that?
I have, do not have a new update. I will be in Seattle tomorrow for our spring board meeting and elected meeting. But I spoke with our director on Friday afternoon after our legislative meeting and I don't think he has any update. So I have not heard anything other than there was a new change of Chief Justice from Gonzalez to I'm blanking right now, Stevens. Which my understanding is she generally is more of a collaborative type person as opposed to Gonzalez, which may perhaps be more of just do it and let it be dealt with. So I, I don't have an update at this point, but that's probably for purposes of, I guess, the criminal justice system. And perhaps financially, you guys, probably the, I'd say it ultimately could be the biggest thing that you guys deal with in this term. If it comes to fruition, because it's going to triple costs of public defense. At least. Well, on paper, they won't be able to fill the positions. So.
Yeah. Okay. Our next financial is child support services. This is also a general fund. But they project on their revenues for the year about six hundred thousand dollars for intergovernmental contracts, projects. And so we're a little bit, we've brought in seventy-five thousand so far. Just that's a little bit under where we would target for at this point in time, but those fluctuates because from month to month, because they are grants.
So support enforcement, I have two attorneys, two staff. Ten years ago, I had four staff, two attorneys. And so basically support enforcement is that our attorneys handle any. Are tied to family law cases that kind of have a state interest. So there's state benefits, federal benefits involved with the parents. So we're talking about like parentage, custody, stuff like that. So generally the state covers or reimburses for, I think it's a hundred and six percent of our costs. So it should be a, well, for county purposes, financially positive thing. But like I said, we've had over the last decade, we've, for example, had a front desk position that became available. We didn't fill it. We had a third position, we had somebody retire last year, didn't fill it. So two attorneys, two staff. One thing we did do last year is we used to have a separate office over on Commerce, kind of across from the Merc up on the third floor. When I took office, that was in a ten-year lease. That lease expired last year. We did not renew that lease and we brought the four remaining two attorneys, two staff into our office with a little bit of remodeling. So we no longer pay about a four thousand dollar a month lease for that office and my entire office is now within the first floor of the Hall of Justice. So. It's kind of where we're at support enforcement. Budget-wise. It sounds like the state is obviously looking at budgets. I have not heard anything positive or negative as it pertains to support enforcement. I probably will in the next day or two with the state director. I will say generally speaking, our office is used as an example when they're talking about offices that are bloated compared to their caseloads. Like, you know, not refilling positions, getting rid of costs such as leases. So I mean Casey's good graces and I hope to remain so. But I would foresee on state level, there'll be reductions, cost cuttings probably this year, next year. I don't. I think I'm probably on the good list, but we'll see.
Okay. And they're, like Ryan said, on their expenses, most of their expenses are personnel related. Out of their budget, it's five hundred and thirteen thousand is budgeted. They've expended so far nine, about ninety-nine thousand dollars. They're a little bit under the target for the twelve-month period. And I currently show they have four positions filled and one open.
We have no intel on filling that position. So.
The next area that we'll go over is their prosecuting attorney victim witness program. Now, this, this account is not a general fund. It has its own special purpose revenue fund. And this one, they bring in, they have intergovernmental contracts, goods and services, a little bit of fines and penalties, and then they do receive some support from the general fund. Under, under other financing sources. So so far they've brought in for all of those categories, a hundred and fifteen thousand out of a four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar budget. I don't see, I'm, I'm not seeing anything here. We anticipate, we probably will look at doing a budget amendment in their revenues. But I'd like, I like to wait for budget amendments on revenues till after the third quarter. So we have a really good history. And because they've already brought in forty thousand out of a seventy-seven thousand dollar budget for that category and intergovernmental.
What is a victim witness?
So our crime victim services department. So they're not victim advocates. They provide victim services to victims of crimes that we deal with. So we have four individuals that work in our victim services. We have one. we have four individuals that work in our victim services. We have one. I don't know if supervisors, right word, senior, who's a paralegal and then three legal specialists. And basically they are day to day, talking to victims, getting information from victims, setting interview with victims, getting crime impact statements from victims, letting them know what services are available out there. Bringing them to court, getting restitution figures for financial victims. Stuff of that nature. So basically they're finding victims, finding witnesses, coordinating trials. I saw two of them walking over to court this morning on the docket to meet up with victims. There's probably either two sentence, you know, some sentencing and or pleas that are going through and there, they'll be there with the victim. So kind of they deal everything victim related. I would say on a statewide level, something just to kind of keep an eye on. Basically over the last decade, our legislature and or courts have gotten rid of any legal financial obligations being imposed on a defendant once they're found guilty or plead guilty. Last year, perhaps the legislature the year before. Basically the last remaining legal financial obligation that our courts imposed was the crime victim fund, which was generally $500 for any felony or gross misdemeanor, $250 for misdemeanor. Our legislature got rid of that. Said, hey, don't worry about it. We will fund, you know, crime victim programs, you know, county by county. I think they put in $4 million for the entire state, broke it up according to size. I'm kind of speaking a little bit without knowledge now, but it sounds like the intent was during this current legislative session, they're like, oh, we'll do you know, four million plus another four million, so eight million over the next two years. I don't know where that stands, but last year the legislature assured everyone, you know, despite the fact that we're getting rid of the $500 crime victim fund that funds your victim services. We will adequately, you know, provide money in lieu of the LFOs to support the programs. I don't necessarily know if that promises being kept a year or two years after they did that. So something to keep an eye on. I don't know where it currently stands enough, well enough to speak on it, but I don't know if you guys can imagine our legislature having empty promises, but it might be one of those.
How are these fees? I see the goods and the services. How are they generated? Where does it, who pays it?
Who pays?
Who pays the $163,000 that you have budgeted for? Where does that come from?
Generally, those are grants, federal and or state grant monies.
I don't recall specifically. It's not the, the witness or the victim that pays it because they eliminated.
Well, the wit- witness or the victim never pay anything. It's the defendants.
Okay.
So. So yeah, those are generally, there's two grants that we get and I don't remember the specific amount, but that's probably the most of that right there from the state.
That's what, that's what threw me off was I'm like, if it's a victim, why are they paying?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, got it.
The legal financial obligations imposed upon the defendant who's found guilty or plead guilty.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to go to the next one. And then as far as expenses for this, this fund, personnel is our largest expense. They are budgeted like 278,000. We've already expended 65,000. This, all the personnel that support this particular program are actually shown in our personnel for general fund. Because they're allocated to this fund based upon a combo code. And so, but they're, they're shown in Ryan's other personnel numbers. And then the services for this account are entirely made up of internal service billings. And so we've budgeted 51 million, 51,000, sorry, not million. And we've expended 41,000. And then the last area that is in the prosecuting attorney's office is a county drug fund. And this one very small amounts of revenues are budgeted 17,500. We brought in 1,508 so far. So it shows that we're a little bit below target, but this fluctuates based upon cases. And there really isn't, when you get to the expenses, we've budgeted $1,500 for expenses on this fund. And we have, we don't have any expenses so far this year. So not significant activity.
So the Calhoun Drug Fund was created. Brad, do you remember what year? Long time ago. By basically county resolution. And so for drug crimes, there was a legal financial, financial obligation imposed upon the defendants for the prosecutor's drug fund. Me myself doing a lot of our Blake vacate cases. So I get a motion from a defendant to vacate their Buxa conviction from either from three years ago or 30 years ago. The amount of the, the drug fund that was imposed on a defendant could have been a hundred dollars, $50, $200, $500. It's fluctuated throughout the years. Basically any revenue from payments on those legal financial obligations have gone into this Calhoun Drug Fund, which currently sits at, is it 240,000? $240,000. It hasn't really been used for much in the last 10 years. There was a chunk of money that was helped use for the Calhoun Drug Task Force about five years ago. The task force no longer exists, but the intent of the fund is to help with drug investigations and or prosecutions. So I've kind of left it untouched. I'm sure Brad would love some money. So I've kind of treated it as a rainy day fund of sorts, but generally the money has to be expended for drug related investigations, prosecutions. So perhaps to fund a deputy for a time period of need be, a drug deputy. Again, this is also something that the amounts there, because I haven't spent money, but anything coming in is drying up because A, a lot of drug cases are being vacated. B, we don't have a drug task force anymore on the county wide level. They have their CRT team, but there's not the joint multi-agency drug task force that existed for quite a few years. So I wouldn't expect this money to grow on any type of significant level because a lot of the a lot of work comes from is required to be vacated now due to Blake. So.
Now, so for example, last year, all we brought in was $5,744. So it is, it is a fund where the revenues are declining and there is a fund balance.
Yeah, it must be very limited as to what you can charge, what type of things you can charge on anymore.
Yeah, well, yeah, we don't have any fines or really, really only restitutions imposed on defendants now.
About all you got.
Current landscape of our wonderful state of Washington.
And that's all I have on the financial side in case there's anything else you have.
How much was in, that sits in that?
The fund balance that's sitting in that particular, it's actually budgeted at right now, ending fund balance is $256,000.
I think I've spent in 10 years, a total of about 15,000 out of that for one project.
Just from listening to you in, in past years, I know you just kind of look at it as a rainy day type thing, what to use it for. Yeah.
I'd like to protect it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll move to the sheriff's department. I think it's on next on the agenda.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Any last second questions?
No. Good to see you. It's been a while.
You too.
Thank you.
You said a drug deputy is talking about a prosecutor. Spending the money on a prosecutor.
Oh, I got you. I got you.
Clarification.
Okay, so I'll get started. So the sheriff's fund is a general fund. It's one of our largest general fund expenditures for the general fund. So they do bring in a little over, we're budgeting a little over 2 million, 2,176,000 basically in revenues coming in for this fund. So far we've brought in 166,000 or $451. The largest item here is a budget related to intergovernmental services. And this is one of the largest ones that they have is called High Crime Project and it's revenue that's brought in and it's brought in quarterly. And so so far this year, we haven't received our quarterly payment for the first quarter because they bill and then they receive the funds in the next month or two. So they should be receiving those funds before the end of this month. That's what's typical. Last year we, we brought in a little over a million eight, but that's because there was one quarter that was booked in 24 that really should have been booked in 23 accrued. So it was, so we still expect for this year a little over a million four in that, that revenue source. Their next highest revenue area is their goods and services. And those are, here's an example. There's a warehouser contract that's in that line item. And so we saw, they saw an increase in their warehouse or contract that began midway through 2024. Yes, Pacific Corps as well.
Pacific Corps contract.
Is also in there. So I don't anticipate, we actually, I'm miscellaneous, a bit of good news. They received some donations. They have 19,000 that came in. This was an unanticipated revenue, but so we're, we're actually over on that budget line. We've exceeded our budget of 15,000. And they also received funding from the general fund that with some transfers in, that's what other financing sources is. And I think a little bit from the mental health reimbursement, mental health tax or behavioral health tax reimbursement there. And those are billed out monthly. So in all, it looks like most of their targets as far as where we're at, they're a little bit below in some. But that's because some of the revenues are billed back and, or done quarterly. So. But I'm not anticipating anything being a problem on their revenue for this year.
Right. Are those warehouser contracts, deputies patrolling the permit areas for warehouser?
Ah, yes.
That's what they are. Okay.
And, and there's, there's some other areas that don't fall under the permit, but primarily it is permit areas.
We'll go to their expenses. On their expenditure side, their largest expenditure is for personnel. They're budgeted a little bit over close to nine million, eight point, eight point nine million dollars in personnel and but benefits. And so far this year, they've expended 1.9 million. So they're a little bit below their target of where they would be on a 12 month period. And then their next highest expenditure budget is their services and that's a little over $3 million. One of their, in their services line is where they're also have some expenses. For example, for the animal control, things like that. So their internal services are billed there. So as you can see, it's got 735,000 so far this year that's been expensed. So all of the internal services for them are also paid in January. Other than that, I don't see any, anything unusual to report on their expenses.
Good morning, Kathy. This is Katrina.
Hey, Katrina.
Hi, I just wanted to point out also that Northwest Security for court security is paid through there and that's a big chunk of that professional services we pay.
Right. I think that's over, it's a contract that exceeds about 400,000 if I'm correct.
Yes.
And as far as personnel goes for the sheriff's office, they have 56 positions currently filled. And I show only one vacancy. And we pretty much last year had one vacancy, but last year we didn't have the animal control fully budgeted in this until about this time or a little later. And so our 56 number includes all of our animal control personnel.
Said deputy or?
Yes, we're, we're down one deputy.
One deputy.
And we do have two retirements coming up here in July. So we're working, I think the endor sheriff spoke with you.
Oh, yeah. I think we were trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit. Yeah. Yeah. Seems to have had pretty decent luck using that website he was talking on.
The, the public safety?
Yeah.
Yep. We just had last week, we have 12 applicants in for interviews. So.
Yeah.
All from that one website?
Yeah.
Wow, that's good.
Yeah, it's a, it's a regional website that Canada goes and takes one test and then he decides which agencies he wants to send their application to. So we get names, but we're usually competing with other agencies too. So that's why we like to move fast and we can.
Yeah. The new security, we've had them in there. About a little over quarter now.
Yeah, so they start January 1.
Are you happy with what you're doing?
Yes, yeah, very happy.
Okay.
Very responsive and professional. And I'm, I'm not just saying that because he's here, but
No.
We're doing, doing a good job.
Good.
Okay, we'll move on to sheriff extradition, extradition. And this one's fairly simple. They're a fund, general fund. So they're supported by the general fund. They don't really have any revenues that come in. But they do have some budgeted expenses, not significant amount. We have $43,000 budget as an expense. And so far this year, we've expended 8,300. Of course, this fluctuates based upon, you know, cases. And so this is our our budget. Last year, we only had 8,000 in total for the year on personnel. But so far this year, we've already expended 5,000. So it fluctuates from year to year. We'll move on to, the sheriff's office also has their CRT, which was previously their joint drug task force, but now it's called CRT. And they are, have their own fund on this one. And they have a small amount of revenue budgeted for the year, about $29,000 is budgeted in total for revenue. With a small supplement support from the general fund of $10,000. So so far this year, they've brought in 11,850. So most of this is from fines, penalties and miscellaneous revenue that they earn on the interest. So.
What's the acronym stand for?
The CRT, Crime Reduction Team.
And then the C A W N F T A?
That's the former Calhoun Drug Task Force. So the That's the former Caliswick High and Narcotics Task Force. So the county was fiduciary for that. So some of the budgets still have that name attached to it.
Yeah, so if they, if they receive any, if they receive any funds from an older case or whatever that comes in, it would still go to this fund. And then as far as expenditures, expenses that go with this crime reduction team. We've budgeted for supplies and services, a little over thirty-six thousand, almost thirty-seven thousand dollars. We've only expended four thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. And most of that is related to internal services billings for this activity, so. But well under budget at this point in time versus our target. And then the next fund that we have is administered by the sheriff's office is our benefits administration. For those personnel that were in the, I don't know if you say leave or left one, left one employees. And we're maintaining this fund with some transfers in from the general fund. Every year we transfer in three hundred thousand dollars. They maintain a, a significant fund balance because they do have the long-term responsibility for health benefits. And care, for long-term care for those employees. So we have a, a fund balance of a little over a million dollars. We transfer in three hundred thousand. We're budgeting that they'll earn some interest income on those funds until expended. And so on the revenue side, I don't see, anticipate any issues with our revenues there.
And are these the employees that have one hundred percent of their medical covered, cost covered?
Yes. Yeah, this is an old retirement system that ran from about nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy-seven. So people that were enrolled during that time hired, you did twenty years, you get lifetime medical. So we currently have, I believe, about thirteen former employees that are on that.
About thirteen people.
We, we have twelve.
Twelve?
We have twelve. And for an example, we have one, just one that we're paying for full-time care. And he is a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year just for the one employee. So if we ever had twelve at one time, that ending fund balance would be eaten up pretty fast.
The one thing they do, they're all Medicare eligible, so they do a supplement and any out-of-pocket. So it was actually a reduction. They're not paying the full cost.
And so, so on the expenditure side, what we were saying is that we're currently budgeting an expense of six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. For the benefits related to those employees, those retirees. We've expended so far this year, sixty thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. It's still below our target. But as Katrina said, there's quite a bit of unknown and uncertainty in this particular fund, so.
How do we decide, Kathy? Is there a, is there a formula or actuarial table? We taking into account their age and all that? Or how do we, we just pick a number?
I don't, I, I, I have no idea if there's, we, to my knowledge, we're not using an actuarial table to calculate this. We do, I know that we have, like we said, we have so many of these employees currently. Where we're paying the supplemental program for their medical expenses. And then we also have the one that's on care, long-term care.
I do know that when I worked in the budget office, there was an actuary study done. And it was to put a lot more than three hundred thousand dollars a year in for the, for these retirees. But that never happened. And I don't think there's been one done since then. That was back in two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
And is the sheriff's department the only department that has those types of employees?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is.
With the county, the city is new and also fire departments that were eligible, so. And there's a joint county board, Long Beach accepted from that, but I know Aron had sat on that. I know one of you gentlemen have been designated yet, but there's a, a board that oversees this budget. Kelso was involved in that. And I believe, I think Kalama, maybe Fire District Two have some folks that are on the same program as well.
Yeah, we have ten in Kelso on that disability board. We have one at Calis Two Fire and Rescue, one at Woodland, and then our twelve that that board oversees. But mostly, there's not much to do. It's all handled.
Yeah.
Yeah, and la- last year, our expenses in total, prior year actuals for the personnel are the largest. Was about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars last year. But yeah, we bud, we, we budgeted four hundred and twenty. This year, we went ahead, we increased the budget to six hundred and forty-five thousand. Anticipating we would dip into that fund balance a little bit.
So as people graduate off the program, and there's a balance and this is just go back to the general fund?
Yes, currently when we do our financials, because the general fund supplements this and supports this. All the funds in this account are considered general fund reserves. And so they're counted in our, when we talk about our reserves. But as Katrina said, the unknown is, you know, you could, you could eat up those reserve, this million dollars. Quick, if, if you had everyone on long-term care, so.
Okay.
The next, the next area is the K nine program. This program, we don't have a tremendous amount of revenues or expenses to report. But it is its own separate fund. And it receives a little bit of supplement from our general fund of fifteen thousand dollars that we transfer in. And we budget eleven thousand dollars for miscellaneous. And that's encompasses things like donations, gifts, et cetera, which have happened in the past. So shows that we're below our, our target, but this fluctuates based upon receipts of gifts and, and donations. And then as far as expenses for the program, it's mostly supplies related to, you know, services for the canine. So we budgeted thirty-eight thousand dollars for service supplies. And we've expended so far about three thousand, a little over three thousand. So we're below a target if you're based upon twelve months. And last year's actuals came in a little over two, twenty-two thousand dollars. So that can fluctuate based upon the cert, the animal.
How many do we have right now?
We have two.
Two?
Dog, dog and a tracking dog. And this past year, I think the expenses were up, we did get a new dog. So we're reflective of that.
Yeah, we got the dog. And those were the two dogs who, yeah. The one still was looking at our knuckle.
Yeah.
Yep. You want me to bring them back? We can, we can do that.
Yeah.
And then the next fund is the, the Bearcat, the Sheriff Bearcat. This is their. Vehicle that is under contract, that in our, in our local contract with other agencies. But we maintain the funds for this Bearcat in a separate fund. So we have goods and services budgeted eighteen thousand seven fifty-six. Those are the billings to the other entities that share in, in the services to maintain this vehicle. Then we also bring in twenty-five thousand dollars from general fund to help support this. So a total revenue budget of a little over forty thousand for, for this program. And then for expenses, we budget. About the same. We haven't had any expenses so far this year. And prior year, we had about thirty thousand dollars of expenses in total for the year. So budgeting about forty, forty-one, fifty-one thousand right now for this account for expenses.
This is a bond. We have to buy this Bearcat. So it's our bond payments and our interest payments and the other police agencies help make that payment.
Yep, those are coming up. June, June, June is the, if I'm correct, Katrina. June first and December first are the.
Correct.
The payments, the.
And then do we use that?
Uh, well, it's used on a regular basis, probably a couple of times a month for training. And then dependent on callouts. And that varies depending on circumstances. Two of the Bearcats, one was purchased in twenty-twelve on a Homeland Security grant. And wanted to add a second one, needed this, requested one because they had an old bank armored car was the second vehicle they were using. Which they like to try to surround a building, at least get on two sides, and that had tendency to get stuck. And they had questions on its armor capabilities. So we went in together, got the bond and all the cities are putting into that. And actually, the county cost went down a little bit because we had been previously, we just won, the county was actually building a replacement fund for the one. We said, well, if you want to get a second one, great, but let's share the, share the expense and they agreed to do that. And we dropped, I think, about three thousand dollars a year that we actually were paying just for the one to actually get jointly go in with everyone to get a, a second one. And these have a lifespan of twenty-five years. It's what they spec out. So we got one in twenty-twelve. And this one was purchased in twenty-twenty-two. So they're, they're durable and they're, they're not used real heavily. And the maintenance expenses on them are fairly light as well.
Weren't we able to gift the, the old one we used to?
The old armored car?
Yes.
Yes, we found a home for that over in Lincoln County.
Yeah.
Out of, I believe that's Ritzville or Davenport.
Somewhere in that, that area. I was trying to recall.
Yep, they came and got it, so.
Yeah, good.
And then the last fund we'll talk about on the sheriff's financials is the sheriff range. And this is set up specifically for interlocal contracts with other agencies and for training. And so Goods and Services has a budget of nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars. We haven't brought anything in yet this year. And then a little bit in miscellaneous. And then we also support this a little bit from fifteen thousand from general fund. So last year's actuals, we brought in a little over total for the year, twenty-five thousand, almost twenty, twenty-four thousand dollars.
How many agencies you got contracted out there now?
I believe we have eleven.
Eleven?
Yeah, I think it is eleven. And twenty percent of what we get, we have to deposit in the lead abatement fund. Which doesn't show on here, but we do put twenty percent in.
How often do we have to clean it out of lead?
Well, currently, I understand even the public range has been there for a number of years. They haven't even done that one yet. They have the, the berm, they come in and test it every so often. And I guess, reach a point where it's, I guess, a break-even point where it'd be, I guess, not profitable, but worthwhile. You want to remove the lead and they can recycle that. So it hasn't reached that point on either range yet, so. And the hope is when they do it, that there is a recycle value there that will offset that cost.
And very, there's very little of the expenses that go with this as well. We've got budgeted seven thousand in supplies. We've only had two hundred and twenty-seven dollars so far this year. And services, twenty-five thousand five hundred. And we've only expensed four hundred and forty-nine dollars, so. That's it for the sheriff's financials. And then if there's anything Brad wants to add.
I wouldn't, I. Year ago, maybe a little more than that, we were contracting out the mental health officers. And then we decided to take those in-house to reduce costs. And I'm just curious how. I think that's going, I haven't heard, it's not going well, but I think it's going well. And are, are, are the numbers reached, increased beyond what we were when we were contracting it out?
In terms of what, which, which numbers increased?
Are, are they making contact? Are you having more contacts with having them in, in-house versus when you were contracting out?
Well, I think it's really been about the same. They were working in-house. It just was the method of payment instead of the contract into Columbia Wellness. We brought them as employees, as county employees. So actually their work, work experience has really been the same. They're out there five days a week.
Okay.
Things remain steady. And they're, they're valuable asset resource for us.
Commissioner Dahl, I think what you're referring to is when we build Columbia Wellness, they had a twenty percent charge. That they would give us an over, a direct charge above what their wages were. And we're not paying that now that they're in-house employees.
Perfect, okay. I recall it was supposed to save us some, some money.
Yeah, twenty percent markup is quite a high amount for overhead charge.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Brad.
Okay, so the next one we have is fairly large one. And so I apologize. This is on finance that we're going to go over, our monthly finance report. And so one of the things that's not in the report is economic and revenue update from the state. That just came out last week. And I just thought I'd give you a couple of things. On the Washington front, they're reporting that the job growth has been weak. Although historical revisions have resulted in higher level of employment. But Washington personal growth, income growth trailed the nation for the, in the fourth quarter. They're showing Washington car sales remained on an upward trend. I don't know if that's going to continue considering tariffs, but that was good news. The only other thing that piqued my interest was that they are reporting lower collections from their major general fund. They reported for the, for the month of March through April tenth, collecting three point eight percent lower than forecasted. And it's my belief that this is probably a trend that we're seeing because of the things, the uncertainties in the markets and, and in the employment. They also on their.
This is, this is the state of Washington?
This is the state of Washington. And so that has a trickle-down effect to us that I anticipate. Their Revenue Act collections, which are three point three percent lower than their forecast also. So, and then they're all, all other revenues that they're tracking was seven point three percent lower than forecasted. So they're seeing just most recent, their most recent data is that they're getting in from collections like sales tax and things at the state level. Less than what they forecasted.
Yeah. Well, you keep driving business out of the state. What do you expect?
Yeah. So anyway, those are things I'm going to keep my eye on as we go. And so we'll see. So we'll start off with, there's the first slide that we show every month. It's our revenue versus expense through the end of March, if you want to. So this one looks kind of bleak, general fund, but it's, but it's typical for this time of year because not all our collections are in. So our revenues so far through March are a little, almost, almost ten million, nine, nine point eight million dollars. Our expenses though are at nineteen point seven. So we're showing a deficit, almost ten million dollars. But that's, we'll be receiving in our property tax proceeds later this month. So like I said, this is through March and April is our largest month for property tax proceeds. Same goes for the county road. They also receive their property tax proceeds predominantly in April. And so their revenue is at two point three through March and their expenses are at three point six.
I know what we get in, in property tax receipts for the general fund, it's around, because she was in. I know what we get in in property tax receipts for the general fund, it's around, cause she was in twenty twenty one million.
Yep.
What do we get in county road?
In county road, um, on the property tax proceeds, um, it's about fourteen million.
About fourteen, okay.
For the year, but then they have other taxes that they also receive in, so.
Do we, do you have a number that you anticipate that these deficits will be made up by when we receive our taxes?
Uh, yes, and I'll I'll show you later what I'm projecting. I've also placed in this our projections for the year. Of where I think we're gonna be. Um, using my little crystal ball. Um, solid waste, uh, this is one that we're now reporting on the the financial reports because we felt like this is a significant. Operation for the county, it's our largest enterprise fund. Um, we, it too shows that we brought in three point eight million in revenues. Um, we have the expenses of sixteen million um through March for a deficit of a little over twelve million. But that's because they do their transfers to their, to their post-closure funds earlier in the year. Um, that they've transferred out to those post-closure funds. So that's a significant amount of this deficit right now.
And what is the amount of the transfer funds per year?
Um, I think it's about, right now we're forecasting, I think eleven, hold on, no. There, we're forecasting budgeted eleven point five in transfers. Um, and last year we budgeted seven, a little over seven million in transfers out.
Okay, so the eleven point five is pretty much been taken out?
It's all been taken out already.
Okay.
And then I can't remember, do we take out a percentage of the volume we take in for the year? Or is it just a fixed amount that we set aside for that post-closure?
I, I think it's a formula. I'm sorry, Sean, should have invited you up, Sean. It's a formula that's computed.
Good morning Commissioners, Sean Rowley, Public Works. So the post-closure is based on a calculation of. The estimated cost to close and we have to cover that cost one hundred percent for any. Prior years as the raise goes up and any new tonnage that is used during the year. And so it's both closure and post-closure. And in addition, within there is our equipment reserve and cell development reserve as well. Within that eleven and a half that was transferred out this year. And all those funds are for the prior year. So in March, we transferred for twenty twenty fours.
And is that formula based on previous closures on dump sites around the state and that's how they came up with it?
Yeah, so we um use our last known number for our area and then we apply certain modifiers throughout the years to continue to stay up with that. Uh, we anticipate another closure area in twenty twenty seven, so we'll have fresh numbers to restart that formula with.
And also part of their expenses are their quarterly rent payments to the general fund, which is our, which is included in this number as well.
What I'm hearing is we fully expect this to reverse itself and. Or as the year goes on.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're, we're forecasting the revenues for this, this particular fund to be twenty, twenty seven point six million dollars.
Yeah, okay.
And the bulk of the expense has already been paid.
Right.
Okay.
You can, you can stay, you can stay if you want. You can join me. Um, so the next, um. The next sheet is just to give you a snapshot of some of the larger expended revenue items, I'm sorry. Some of the larger revenue items that makes, makes the close numbers. Um, for the general fund, of course, our largest is our tax revenues. Um, budgeted at thirty two point nine million dollars. So we've brought in so far this year a little over two point two. Um, which is seven percent of our budget. And when you look at last year, we had budgeted thirty two million and we brought in almost at this point in time, almost this exact same amount. Um, the one thing that I want to report on that, and we'll look at it a little bit. But it may not be a lot of money, but it's a positive. It was our sales tax revenue, our sales tax receipts for the month of January. We, which we received in March was yay, six percent higher than the prior year. And we had seen a decline last year of a little over a million dollars in total in that revenue fund. So anyway, so that's good news and you'll see a more detailed chart on that in a minute. The um, then the, the next largest item in uh the general revenue fund that we have. Um, well, it's not really the next, but it's my next on my page, is our intergovernmental. We budgeted, um. So we picked, selected some of the larger funds here to show you. Um, it's three point five million dollars. We brought in a little over two million dollars, two point one. And last year we had budgeted three, almost three point five as well. And at this time we had bought in, brought in two point four million dollars. We just wanted to note that, which I previously spoke about on the sheriff's department, their um. Criminal justice funding for last year, um, that was recorded in the first quarter. Was really actually a twenty three quarter four payment that um got reported in twenty four. So that's why it's not comparing exactly um year to year. So we're expecting our first quarter payment for that grant or that contract to come in in later April. Um, as far as uh goods and services, one of the larger ones in that area is our jail booking fees. And um, we're budgeted a little over one point five million there. But in total, um, we brought this budget down just a little bit um to two point five this year. And last year we had it budgeted at two point seven. So um. And dollar wise, we are above what we were last year at this time. We have three hundred and thirty thousand brought in and last year we had two hundred and eighty two thousand dollars brought in. So we're got a positive going there as well. On our, I'm sorry, I'm going too fast, right?
That's okay. Jail bu- booking fees, is this a reflection on uh district court? To, so that's.
This is actually our corrections area where we have our daily booking rates and fees.
Alright.
Um, that contract too, um, um, Marin Fox is working on. Issuing new contracts with the cities for those rates and they, they're going, going up slightly over what they have been in the past. So those haven't gone into effect yet. Um, but I anticipate they will. And um, so we may be amending this budget upward uh for twenty five.
Okay.
Kathy, in the intergovernmental, we didn't have it on the screen, but it says criminal justice counties, what is that?
That's, that's the contract that, um, it's an intergovernmental contract that we receive in, revenue in. For, and that's the one where they bill quarterly and we haven't received the first quarter payment yet. It's, it's a, it's called criminal just, a high criminal justice program.
And do we get that from surrounding counties or or municipalities?
No, this is, this is from, um, I believe it's a state fund.
Oh, that's, is that the fund Ryan was talking about? That the state put money in?
No.
Okay.
No, this was, this is actually for the um sheriff's office. It's a program that they're receiving funds from. On our miscellaneous revenue, we have budgeted a little over ten million dollars. Um, and we had the, pretty much the same budget last year, ten point three. We brought it down just uh slightly. For this year on our budget. Um, we. Um, we brought in a little over two point two and last year at this time we had bought in two point three. So we're down just a little bit on our interest investment income. We anticipate that to be just a little bit lower. Think we were running on average last year um for both programs that are invested. Five, five percent were um, were closer to four, I can't remember what it was, four point seven, four. Anyway, it's, it's a little less than five right now.
Four, five or something like that?
Yeah. But I, I don't anticipate, um. While the budget last year says two point one five at this point in time. I, I think we brought in more last year than than what we had budgeted, so. We were trying to stay pretty conservative with our budget at two point one on investment income. Um, the next area of revenue at a glance is related to our road fund and it's primarily, it's, um, as you can see, the sum of their taxes. Um, are, are a little, budgeted a little over fifteen point seven million. Um, and last year was budgeted at fourteen point nine. We're very, very close um as far as um revenue collections. Um, from last year, we're at nine hundred and ninety two thousand. Last year we were at nine hundred and eighty eight thousand. So we're, we're pretty consistent there. On the solid waste, which is a new one that we're showing, uh, we've, our budget is. Uh, twenty seven million six hundred and thirteen for the year. We brought in three point six. And last year at this point in time, we had brought in two point nine nine eight thousand. Um, so there were some additional transactions at the transfer station compared to twenty twenty four.
Sean, is that increase due to the conversation that we had last week?
I turned it off instead of turning it on. So this may be a timing issue as well. Uh, I wasn't prepared to chat on this when I came in this morning. Um, I would, uh, if this is through the end of March, we would see three months of transfer station. And one month of landfill revenue in here if all the accruals for twenty twenty four have been done. So for at the landfill itself, we have a forty five day billing period. So at the end of January, that first month of the year. Those wouldn't have been due until March fifteenth and then February wouldn't have been till April fifteenth. So we probably have some lag time in there as well.
Did we add any new contracts last year? When did we add Mason?
Mason was a swap. We excused some lower customers or less desirable customers for the Mason County.
For the Mason, okay.
And then the la- the last item is just motor vehicle fuel tax. Um, it's a significant budget. For the road fund and it's budgeted at two million. It's brought in almost seventy eight thousand. Um, last year we budgeted one point nine million. We're a little, little lower than we were this point in time last year. Last year we had brought in a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars.
Is that a timing thing also?
I, I hadn't looked at this one.
Cause that's almost half.
Yeah, I hadn't looked at it.
So we usually receive monthly distributions on those from the state at the end of the month, uh, so there may be a timing issue there possibly as well.
Yeah.
I might point out, we get a pretty small percentage of what they actually collect. That they reimburse down.
We'll go to the expenses now. Um, so for general fund, we have um expenses budgeted at. Total seventy six million dollars. Um, so far, like you saw on that very first slide, we've. We have expenses already of nineteen point seven million uh through March. Most of those are in our general fund, but it's, it's tracking as a percentage of the budget pretty consistently from year to year. Twenty two percent. Um, for services, which is the next largest budget in the general fund. Uh, we budgeted twenty one million. Last year we had budgeted a little over twenty million. Um, we're at forty percent of budget. The expenses are up this year versus last year and that's because. Both our risk management expenses went up, which is part of the services line uh in the internal buildings and also our. Um, IT expense budgets were up a little bit over the prior year as well. Um, the only other thing is transfers and transfers is, uh, last year at this time, we delayed. Posting some of our transfers. We did, it's a timing issue and so we did some already this year for. Um, five hundred and eighty three thousand versus sixty two thousand five hundred last year.
Is that increase in risk management, the increase in our full premium?
Yes, mm-hmm, yep. And the general fund pays approximately, um, of those, of those billings. It's a pretty high percentage. It's over, it's about sixty five percent of the total billings go back to the general fund. And then we go to county road, which is our, another fund that we're highlighting. Um, we're, our total expense budget is fifty million, a little over fifty million. We've expended so far three point six million dollars, which is about seven percent of the budget. Um, I would note that when you look at our services. Um, we have budgeted uh nine point three million versus last year, we had a little bit. Um, we had about eight million dollars budget in that line. That is two things. It's um increases in internal services. Billings, but it's also putting a million dollars more in the repairs budget expenditure line for roads than we did last year.
And that's really going to our overlay program at this point.
Um, and then on capital, I do note that this year's uh significant increase about. Thirteen million dollar, a little over thirteen million dollars increase over last year's budget. Um, we're budgeting twenty seven point seven million for capital. This is due to budgeting more for construction related projects, um, structures. I think one of them's a Brit, large bridge. And so I think there's several projects from twenty four that got uh delayed and now are being moved to this year. For finishing and for the expenses to flow through.
Yeah, I think we'll have an update with the board here pretty quick on our capital projects that were planned for the originally and where those are at. Um, as you guys have seen, the Cloverdale project did go out, thank goodness. Um, we are still having some issues on other projects and we'll want to communicate those with you in the near future.
But these are all things we've built reserves for to anticipating capital stuff down the line.
Yeah, and Susan's team has really done a good job on getting grants and other funding sources as well, so the local dollars is quite small.
Yeah.
Um, but so far this year, like I said, we're at seven percent of budget. Last year we were at ten percent of budget. Um, so we're tracking very, uh, very closely to last year. Solid waste, uh, when you look at their expenditures. Um, their expenditures last year were a little higher, uh, budgeted total thirty four mil, thirty four point five million, almost thirty four point six. Million. This year we're budgeted at thirty two point eight. Um, we're a little less on our services this year. Um, and, but we're a little higher on our transfers related to our actual calculations for the. The closure and post-closure funds. So it shows that so far this year on services. Uh, we've expended a little bit more than we did last year at this point in time, um, as well as on the transfers. And that's why we're at forty nine percent of budget versus last year, thirty four percent of budget.
Yeah, as we discussed earlier, the transfers is really for those closures, post-closures, equipment and such things. Uh, on the services line, last year, we did have an amendment for about six million dollars related to the gas energy project that did not happen. So if we were to compare apples to apples, we'd be looking at um sixteen point six versus seventeen point oh.
Hmm, yeah, that's right, I forgot about that. I did, we all had, all three of us had a chance to spend some time with Dale Lewis or Port Longview. I did make our best cases why he should buy the Tenaway landfill, but he.
So those are your expenses at a glance. Then we go on, we actually have a detail of our property taxes collections through March next. And we, our year-to-day receipts for the first quarter were one point five. And as I understand that, that's pretty much on track with our historical. And so we will see a large increase the next time we look at this because of the April one-half property tax payments are due and payable by April thirtieth. And so we still have at this point in time a little over eighteen point eight million to collect for twenty five's taxes. And then in total for the rest, your, your three hundred four, less than four hundred thousand dollars to collect for all other years. And as you can see, there are collections happening even on those every month, so. Then the good, next one is my good news story on sales tax. This is, we're showing you a three-year, this year, we'll be showing you a three-year trend. And while we're not at the same level we were at twenty twenty-three, we are higher than we were at twenty twenty-four for the month of January. So this is where I'm showing the six percent increase over twenty twenty-four. And we're pretty much right on target with our, where we, for our budget purposes, we should be about eight percent to hit our target. And for the month of January, we're actually at seven percent of budget. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed.
Yeah.
So total budget for this is eleven point five, which is about half of our property taxes, if you think about it. So. Recording fee, there's good news there as well. On the recording fee, they're able to show, they have three months' worth of activity because there isn't a lag in timing on these. But their transactions have pretty much increased over that of last year. And then the dollars as well, which is the next chart, the actual fee income is up eleven percent for January, flat, pretty flat for February, down, slightly down but flat. And then March, up nineteen percent. And these are your recording fees that are on real estate transactions.
I know there's a bill and it is expected to pass that will close. They call it a loophole. I don't quote me on this, but I think it's like when a mortgage or transfers that loan to another mortgager, somehow the document fees didn't get in. I could be wrong on that. But anyway, over statewide, with that closure and that loophole, they're estimating twenty million dollars. Now, I don't know what that means to Calhoun County, but it appears that when that legislation comes through and passes, you might see some, some increase here.
The next set of documents that I wanted to go over is just kind of setting us up for looking at, we're going to be talking about twenty twenty-six budgets and twenty twenty-seven budgets here fairly soon. And so I wanted to kind of go over where I think we're at. We are far enough long now. We have a preliminary financial report, budget versus actual that we prepared. I know Kaylee is still in the comptroller's office, still working on her financials and the reporting for, to turn over to the state auditors, which she'll do next month in May. But we at least have a preliminary to show you. And so we had an original budget for twenty twenty-four that showed revenues a little over fifty four million, expenses at seventy million, transfers in almost four million and transfers out two point eight for, for a budget fund balance change decline of about fourteen point five million dollars. And then this was our estimates for beginning and ending fund balance. And this is just general fund that I'm talking about. So then, as we went through the year, we revised the budget. And as we ended the year, we revised that revenue budget from fifty four million to fifty seven million. Expenses, we revised those up a little bit from seventy million to seventy one point six. And I will point out, when we were talking about expenses for the general fund, this is where we're budgeting as if every position is filled. And then we had transfers that went up a little bit, four point three, transfers out that went up to three point eight for a change in fund balance. Not much different than when we started the original budget out, but at thirteen point nine, which is a little lower, which is good. And then the actuals, which is right now preliminary, of course, until Kaylee's completely finished. But we're saying, based upon what we, we have on the reports right now, almost sixty million of revenues, which is over, which is good. It's over what we estimated in our budget. Expenses at sixty three point eight million dollars, which is less than what we had estimated in our budget. And our transfers at four point three, that's transfers in, and then transfers out at three point eight million. So we will end this year, barring any other adjustments, major adjustments, in the range of about a deficit of three point five million dollars, reducing fund balance. So based upon last year's ending, we revised up the beginning fund balance to equal last year's twenty twenty-three ending fund balance, which was twenty two point seven. And with the deficit, that takes our fund balance down to an estimated nineteen million dollars, nineteen point one million dollars. So that's where I think we're going to end twenty twenty-four. So then having that new set of numbers helps me to forecast where do I think we're going to be for twenty twenty-five? And so I looked at our revised budget through the first quarter, which says that we were going to dip into fund balance of fifteen point seven million dollars. But that's with every position filled and all the overtime we have budgeted consumed and et cetera, and being very conservative on the revenue side. So we would still end up with a positive fund balance on that revised budget of eight million dollars. Now I'm going to project, use my crystal ball here and project where I think twenty twenty-five will end up being. If we have a similar revenue situation as twenty twenty-four, we would end up at about fifty nine million versus the fifty six that I currently have in the budget. Our expenses with the vacancies and things like that we have would come in a less, seven, I'm forecasting maybe about seven million less than what we currently have budgeted. And I'll show you a chart next on why I'm saying that, because I have some information to back that up. And then our transfers coming in pretty much where they're at budgeted right now. So for twenty twenty-five, we would again dip into fund balance about five million dollars versus three point five million dollars. And that would leave us with, if we start with a nineteen point one million beginning fund balance, that would leave us at the end of twenty twenty-five with a thirteen point nine million dollar fund balance. And this is the assumption departments will spend, they won't spend all of their budget revenue because they typically don't. And I'm going to show you a chart on that. And the revenue is coming at budget versus the same as last year. So those are some of my assumptions that I've built into this to show you that we probably will be at a thirteen point nine million dollar fund balance at the end of twenty twenty-five.
Is the emergency fund part of that thirteen nine or is that?
Yes, and I'll show you, I'll show you a chart that kind of has a graph that says, okay, here's where your budget policy says, here's where the state anticipates would be an appropriate fund balance and where we're at. And so we still, we still have an appropriate fund balance. But as you can see, last year, we went dipped in three point five. I'm estimating this year five million. And so there's a downward slope on those trends. The next chart, this is very interesting. I don't think we've ever shown this before, but this is every general fund department that we have and that makes up our general fund. And their budgets, based upon their budgets, they expended about seven point eight million dollars less than what we had in the budget for them. And most of the categories are in the direct labor line. And so in the past, departments also had to budget their overtime without regard to their direct labor line because direct labor had its own budget category. And when they needed to expend money and overtime, they had to have budget capacity in addition to that direct labor line. And so we've had some over the years budgeting that basically duplicates our direct labor. Because when you have a direct labor line and you have a vacancy, you usually have, overtime is the first thing that, that causes, causes a variance using that, the fact that you have a vacancy. So there's some of that going on in our budgets that probably we need to take a hard look at this year. And I'm going to be asking departments when they are preparing budgets to look at that. Because now we have, we built the budget where the budget pool says direct labor and all other compensation lines are one budget. And they've never had that before. This was the first year that that's happened, that they had the capacity to draw from direct labor to cover overtime if they needed to for unexpected activities like vacancies. So typically, and I, we did this in, I think we tried to do this, we started off with who had the largest budget to show you how much of their budget was not expended. So our top three departments contributed to probably half of this underspent budget. Their two point, two point something, two point two or two point three, right there in those top three. So, anyway, so this is something to consider. And that's why when I revised my twenty-five estimate right now, I'm saying we're only going to dip into fund balance about five million versus the fifteen that we have budgeted. Let's go to the next slide. This is the graph that shows you is our fund balance sufficient for our board policy? And also for best practice, which the state auditor's office, they're saying you should have two months' worth of reserves in our board policies one month. So we're showing you what our board policy numbers were for the last several years. And the green line is showing you what our fund balance actually was at the end of the financial reporting period. And I'm, of course, estimating twenty twenty-five's number. And twenty twenty-four's are preliminary right now. So we've gone from fifteen million in twenty eighteen up to as high as twenty two million in twenty-three. And this last year, the preliminary estimates that we'll be at nineteen million, which is well above the state auditor's projections as well as our board policy.
Yeah. So the state, when we get it audited, they say that one of the best practices they'd like to see is sixty days. I wonder why, how we set thirty days instead of sixty?
I don't know.
Be an RCW thing? I don't know why.
There isn't actually, there isn't an actual RCW on it, but this is what the state looks at when they're doing their auditing for financial solvency and sufficiency is, they say two months of reserve.
Yeah, I guess it's.
At a minimum.
Not a huge thing. I'm just curious in my own mind why our policy would be less than best practice.
Right.
Is there any one specific thing, Kathy, from two thousand and three, that you can see that's created that downward trend? Or is it a combination of several?
One of the things that we're, that, that you're seeing is that your, I guess you've got an inverted line. You've got some expenses that are going up much faster than your revenue streams are. You have a, you know, you have a significant limitation on your revenue streams with the property tax escalation at the one percent. With our sales tax going down, the one million, pretty much one million. But then you had collecting bargaining agreements that settled. And so some of those have significant commitments to them. And so just in, just in the range of the COLAs you're talking about, close to two million dollars for collective bargaining and exempts that we, we covered in COLAs.
With, with that run of inflation or COLAs about.
And then the inflation.
What we've been bringing in, yeah.
And so, so, you know, I'm sounding the alarm bell that when we prepare our twenty-six, twenty-seven budgets, we really have to probably ask for an exercise for the departments. Not, not all departments are the same and have the same resources. But most departments, as you see, I was very pleased to see every, every single department in the general fund spent less than what they were budgeted at, to the tune of about seven point eight million dollars. But in order, and then that produced a three point five million dollar deficit still, even though they spent seven point eight less. So my suggestion is that we ask departments to maybe, you know, do some worksheet preparations, looking at their budgets, maybe asking them, what can you do if there was a five percent decrease, ten percent decrease to your budget? Asking them just to look at what, what, where they might be able to help trim their budgets if, if at all possible. Or where they could also increase their revenues.
Well, you could see this, and I've been asking, what I've been saying is you should be sharpening your pencils because you could see it coming. I mean, it wasn't rocket science. You could see it headed that way. My question for you is, if we have a state audit and we fall below the best practice, what's it affect? Is it, for example, does it affect our risk pool rate? Would it affect bonding rate?
Yeah.
What, what's the negatives?
Yeah, so having your fund balance declining will affect your bond ratings. It can affect your, I think, just overall, you know, your, your sufficiency. They would, they would call it your financial wherewithal. So. But the biggest one is your bond ratings.
Yeah.
That's a risk to the county.
So obviously, it's something we need to pay pretty good attention to.
And the good news is right, yeah, right now, we're not set up, we're not looking at any significant bond issuance. But we could be. I mean, you know, we want to be in a position, the best position that we possibly can be. So anyway, so I, I think my recommendation is that I, I'd like to, we're going to ask the departments to begin putting their budgets in. This, that's, this slide here is, it's sort of a recap of what I just showed you, but it also includes actuels for twenty two, twenty three, and then the preliminary actuels for twenty four that we've, we believe are pretty well solidified. So there's not a lot of fluctuations there. Twenty twenty two is an unusual year because that's the year you refinanced your landfill bonds. And because of that, there was a disbursement, so it showed us a revenue. There was also then a commitment to pay down the old bonds. That was an expense, so it overinflated revenues and expenses. I'll just tell you that by about twenty, twenty two million dollars. So, so that's the only anomaly in twenty two though. But you can see in twenty twenty two, the good news is our revenues were pretty close to our expenses. Twenty twenty three, our revenues were still a little bit higher than our expenses, just barely. And then twenty, then twenty twenty, twenty twenty four is where we first see the first significant dip into our reserves.
Yeah, that's a, in our personnel in twenty twenty four to twenty twenty three, that's a four million dollar.
Right. We, in the budget for twenty twenty four, we approved a little over a million dollars of new positions for various departments. And then we also had several of the contracts settle with the COLAs, et cetera. So, yeah, so those things cost. And we also in twenty twenty four increased our contribution for our employees, the part that the county kicks in for their, the payments, the, the medical payments. So instead of going up fifty dollars, we went up two hundred dollars that year.
Think the majority was probably COLAs and medical because even, I know we increased some positions, but take for example, uh, the Humane Society, we, we stopped paying, we took employees in, but it's less than the contract we were, we were paying. And the same with behavior health. We took those people in, but it was less than the contract we were paying.
It was less than the services contract.
So I think a lot of those positions were kind of trade offs. I think where the rubber meets the road was really trying to keep up with the inflation and, and the COLAs for people.
Yep. So, so the last slide shows that we're going to have our call for budgets. Typically it happens in June, later June. We have the departments, first part of July, start doing their budgets into our budget loss system. And then we close it August eleventh and we compile all that database and produce a preliminary revenue and expenditure budget for, to present to the commissioners according to state requirements first, first of September. And then we have public workshops for departments to come present and different selected topics, all during September and October. So you're going to see lots of dates there. And then we have our public hearing for the levies, general fund and road fund, late November. We'll have a workshop before that though to talk about them. And, and then we hope to have our budget complete by December second. And if not, you get to recess, recess the meeting and continue additional dates there in December if, if necessary. So, but I'm, I'm proposing that in, before they get ready to put their budgets in, that maybe the month of May would be a good time for departments to really workshop and look at their, their budgeted expenses to see what, what they might be able to do and, and the ramifications of those if they have to make any significant cuts. But not, but have targets, not everybody's across the board. It's just more of targets across the board. And then the departments can compile their information and turn those in so that we can look at them. Is that okay? If I send some worksheets out to departments and we start talking about how we might be able to tighten, tighten our budgets up to, to shrink that deficit if we can even.
Anybody think that's unreasonable? I think that's very reasonable. I'd rather them do it. I, if, if we don't get to a point and it's us three doing it, right? Wouldn't they rather do it themselves? I think they'd rather do it themselves.
Yeah, and I, and I think we've heard, and I think it's appropriate. Not every department's the same.
Right.
And so it should be a matter of the director being able to look at what they can do and, and how those impacts of what it would do to them to have, you know, if they had to do a ten percent cut, what would it, what would it do? What would be the impact?
Well, and not every department that you say is the same and runs off general fund. Building planning, for example, runs off the fees they.
Yeah. At this point.
So it's really.
Yeah, at this point, I was just thinking of just asking general fund departments to do this, not, not every department, not an enterprise fund.
Yeah. I would agree with that, you know, building and planning, they kind of have to be balanced on what they bring in versus what they, they spend. So it's almost like a, you can kind of look at it as a small, small, yeah, business type operation, yeah.
My proposal is just for general fund because that's where my focus is on our fund balance right now. I don't, I don't think, I don't see that we have any significant issues in any of our other fund balances.
Okay.
Sorry to take up so much time.
No, thank you. That was good information.
I, I know it's, it's odd because when they think of county budget, we're, we're over two hundred million total. But the, the nuts and bolts is this seventy million.
Yes, that's, that's your bulk of your primary business activity as far as a county.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that was, we're kind of late on the agenda stuff, but I guess we can move right, right to it. Is the sheriff department still on? Did they want to talk to any of their, their items? What items do they have? Katrina, do you want to talk to any of your items on the agenda for tomorrow?
I don't think we have anything on. I was more listening to Kathy's budget report. Do you have anything that shows on there, Commissioner, at all?
I just saw them on the list. Let me look down through.
I think it was just for our budget and then I wanted to hear Kathy's report.
Oh, the only thing, okay, the only thing coming in, you wouldn't speak to anyways, call for hearing on the dangerous animals is scheduled for May. That's the one.
Okay.
I think that's all, all for the sheriff.
All right.
So perfect. Thank you.
I'm, I'm the next item.
Okay.
On the agenda list. So tomorrow we will come forward and all it is, is requesting a public hearing for our second quarter budget amendment. And we will be doing that budget amendment, May twenty seventh now. Because you're, there's not going to be a May twentieth. Originally I had May twentieth. So that's why I was coming forward this, at this time. And then I have a requirement to post that public hearing for two weeks in the paper. And so that's why we do it the month before. So that's my only item. And in that budget amendment, we will be doing a budget amendment as well as dissolving a fund for our purchases, purchasing services, which was a separate fund when at one time we had a print shop and we had the mailroom and, and some other purchasing paper services all combined into one fund. We no longer have the print shop. Our mailroom is not a revenue generating shop. It's, it's a general fund now. It's absorbed into Office of Ministry of Services. And we will no longer sell bulk paper to departments. And so we don't, we don't have a need for this purchasing services fund any longer. And so we'd like to dissolve that fund. So that's also included in that budget amendment.
My turn?
Your turn.
My turn. Uh, number one, we have a call for hearing for proposed surplus vehicles and equipment. Uh, it'll be happening May thirteenth here. So we have a few vehicles on there, a little bit from landfill, a little bit from the sheriff's office, a little bit from ERNR, a little bit from motor pool. Nothing too significant. We can go over that in more detail as we get farther down the line. We might have some additions to that as well.
Do these go to an auction or the public gets? You probably answered this for me before. They go to, we try, at one point in time, we tried to sell, didn't we? Years in the past?
In the past, it's, it's been cleaner and easier to do it through a third party.
Do it through a third party?
Yeah. Usually the heavier equipment, we send up to Richie Brothers. And then the lighter duty passenger vehicles and such things, we send down to Jay Stout in Vancouver or Waschugle area, just based on the premiums they charge.
How many total is it?
Twelve currently. Oh, I'm good. You want me to keep going or you want to jump into yours?
You, you can do whatever you want.
Right. I'm going to go down to the motion item, number next, the fun one. We have a amendment number one to the professional service agreement with BHC consultants for as needed cell waste engineering to increase by four hundred thousand dollars up to one million total. And this is for our cell ten design. We have thirty percent designs, we're working towards a hundred percent for construction in twenty twenty six. And so that's really where these dollars are going to. We just want to be mindful of our amendments and do them purposefully. So that's going to include, you know, the hydrologist, the geologist, the liners, the gas, everything that goes with designing that landfill.
So, so we're at thirty percent presently? And this will shoot us into a hundred percent at the end of twenty twenty six?
Over thirty percent, but this will bring us to a hundred percent is my understanding.
Okay. What point in time do you think, oh, sorry, Steve?
No, go ahead, Rick.
What point in time do you think cell ten will start being used? Soon as we get it designed, I mean, is it ready or we still got capacity?
We'll still have capacity in nine. I'd rather have it in the ground ready to go in case there's something large or a event of some sort.
I agree with that, yeah.
That way it doesn't slow down any revenue flow. But how, how do we figure the, the initial, like the initial six hundred thousand dollars? How did we come up with that number? And where the increase of four hundred, what's that for? You know, what's the process of going, okay, where did we get six hundred thousand? And why do we now have an additional four hundred?
Sure, yeah. Um, so at the beginning of the year, we look at, or at the beginning of the contract, we look at what we have or what's remaining that we need to do, such as, you know, we have multiple task orders with them. So for our leachate, our on-call needs for, say, acceptable waste for maybe material that we are not equipped to handle. We need a little bit more guidance on those. On-call, general filling needs. So as we plan how to fill the cells, we'll get advice or technical layout on that. Installation of our stormwater controls, of our gas systems, things of that nature. And so we ask for those proposals from them. They'll give us that scope and the requirements for that. And at that point in time, we may negotiate or we'll bring it back to the board here and ask for that change.
And when we set up this original contract, the, some of our leachate needs were unknown at that time. It came about because of Turwa's restrictions on what we're discharging to them. So we've done some studying and sampling that would not be our normal. The fill plan was also something that we originally didn't anticipate. So there were things that we've added to this contract precipitating this extra four hundred thousand.
So they're typically variables that just pop up. They're not miscalculations based on information that we got.
Yeah, okay. It's usually an ask from us.
Yeah.
So the remaining two items that Sean so graciously jumped over were two call for bids. The first is the call for bid for the county white guard rail project. Now, this is different than the guard rail project that went out to bid in December. This is installation of new guard rail and it's federally, it's federal safety dollars. So it is a hundred percent funded. We're estimating about five hundred and eight thousand dollars. The majority of this money is being spent on Little Kalama River Road and up on Shirley Gordon. We have several areas where there's steep drops off the side of the road. So the majority of that money is being spent there, but there are other locations where also adding guard rail. So that one will open on May twentieth. The other call for bid we have is for the annual striping project that will open on May nineteenth. We have a current estimate of six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. And we're striping all the arterials and collectors and then the roads that are being chip sealed this year. And there are a few roads that aren't arterial and collectors that we do every year due to their elevation, the frequency of fog, the steep shoulders. We have a few locations that we recognize need to be striped annually also. And that is all general, our general road fund money. So it comes from our road maintenance budget.
Isn't that down from last year? Were we around eight hundred thousand last year?
We were, yes. We had a lot of chip seal roads that weren't arterials and collectors last year.
They've replaced all the guard rails out west side, at least where I live. Well, I'll see how long they last.
See how long they last. We also know we have a handful of locations that we didn't get corrected because they occurred after the start of that project. But because it's a unit bid contract, we'll go, come back to you probably October and November to supplement that project's budget for them to pick up things that have been hit since they're done, been done through October, November. So we'll have a good start in the winter.
That's what I was just going to ask you, with, for these two projects, how far into fall do we go?
So the new guard rail, once they get started, it's probably four to six weeks. So we'll be done some point in the summer. Striping, the goal is always to be done before Labor Day due to weather.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're real close, Jessica. You want to head right in or what do you have? One request, do you want?
Taking it easy on us today.
Good morning, Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I have a request from Public Works to fill one of their open ASE or non-ASE certified mechanic positions. This position's been open for the past year, but due to some other positions being on extended leaves, they'd like to fill this position.
What's ASE?
Good question. It's their certification automotive, do you know, Sean? A mechanic. I believe it starts with an automotive.
They've had to pass some kind of test, I would guess.
Yeah. And they can fill it as a certi- And they can fill it as a certified or a non-certified position. Having your certification comes with more pay.
Okay.
So somebody commented on what it is. I can't read it from here, though.
Automotive service excellence.
Okay, I had the first word.
There we go.
Not seeing any objection.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is she on? So why don't we, we have Jennifer Giltrip. Okay, from Yale. There you are. And I know we have a couple of positions, so.
Yes, hello, I'm Jennifer Giltrip from the Fort Vancouver Regional Library. And, and the room there is Kathy Wheeler, who is secretary of the Yale Valley Library District. So she's welcome to come up to the citizen table if she would like to add to what I'm saying. I was asked to give you a little overview of the Yale Valley Library District. So if you have a few minutes, I would love to do that. The Yale Valley Library District is a rural partial county library district under RCW 27 dot 12 dot 470. The Yale precinct is the taxing boundary for the Yale Valley Library District service area. And voters approved that district in May of 2003. It is considered a junior taxing district, which is governed by a five-member Board of Trustees. The trustees are appointed by you, the Board of Commissioners of Collets County, and must be residents of the district at the time of appointment. Trustee terms are for five years and no trustee may serve more than two consecutive terms. We do have the bylaws of the board that we can share with you if you're interested. Currently, we have four board members and a five, and one vacancy. And Kathy, who is there today, her term expires in July. So we're looking for two more people to fill the board. You recently appointed Nikki Jolly. She has not yet been able to attend a meeting, but she's our newest board member. The board meets six times a year to conduct the business of the district. And Yale Valley Library District built the current library, which opened in July 2021. And the district contracts for service with Fort Vancouver Regional Libraries. That's why I'm here. We provide all of the services within the building. So the staff, the books, the technology, everything that's happening within the building. And we attend the board meetings and keep track of the financials for that library district. And we treat them as just one more of our 15 locations that we operate throughout 4,200 square miles. We provide fiscal management, staff, materials, technology and maintenance for the Yale Valley Community Library on behalf of the district board. The 2025 Yale Valley Library District levy rate is 29.2975 cents per thousand dollars of taxable assessed value. And our revenue is projected to generate $175,000 this year. So that gives you a little bit of overview of what the Yale Valley Library District is and, and why you are involved in appointing board members for that district. The library board met in April and reviewed the current applicants that have been submitted. And the board would like you to consider appointing Alisa Demakio and Emelda O'Chao. I hope I'm saying their names correctly. And Kathy, if you would like to add anything, please do.
There's a green light on, there's a little button. There you go.
Gotcha, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. It's good to see you this morning. I am Kathy Wheeler and I have lived in the Yale Valley Library since 1972. And we moved there with two small children. And at that time, there were probably about 600 people that lived in the valley. And the school was the main, everybody went to the school, a two-room school. Terrific. And there were quite a few, there were several of us. And the school, I had children in the school, others had children in the school, the teachers, the cook, the volunteers. All for years in the eighties and nineties dreamed of having a library service. And if you'll read our packet, which you probably should keep in your piles, because that will educate you in who we are and what we are. And, oh golly, I lost my train of thought. Anyway, the levy or the, the opportunity to form a library district came up two, two times. And it, the boundaries were the school district at the time and both times. And during those two levies, it always passed in our precinct. This is the impetus for this project that you're now seeing. And in the, in the late nineties, early 2000s, there was a new law put in in the state called the, the Partial Rural Library District, creating one. And one of the members of our small group, which turned into a support for this library, the Let's Read Committee, was Julia Stoll. And in the law, it said you have to have a contiguous boundary with another district. And if you want to join the district, well, with the school, we did have a contiguous boundary. But with our precinct, we also had a contiguous boundary and it always passed. So we went to our commissioners, just like you, Bill Lanning. I don't think, I don't know if George Rader was on at that time. And there was another one that has just escaped me, I've been trying to remember his name. And they said, you get the signatures and you get the support from Fort Vancouver and we'll work on this. And we did. They gave us the support. They actually paid for our first election, which was incredibly generous of them. If it had failed, we would have had to raise money to pay it back. But the library district accepted us, which that was the huge thing because they had the expertise that we didn't have. And in the very beginning, after the, we got ready to vote and it did, it did pass. The boundaries had to be set. And the library district said all along that we needed to go with the precinct. There were some that thought in order to get it passed, we should go with the fire department boundaries, but we didn't. We went with the precinct boundaries. It passed. And that decision probably is responsible for us having a library building today. Because that, if, I, I don't have a picture of our precinct, but that include Timberland. And Timberland really paid for this library. And at the very beginning, at our, one of our very first meetings, the first resolution we did was put any funds that came to our library in a reserve capital project to grow and to build a library. And by the late 20 teens, we had a million dollars. And through fundraising, through state grants, we are what you see today, a viable library. And I don't know if any of you have been up there. And I, and I was thinking about this over the weekend. I think it's really, I think COVID put a big dent in things. Things just kind of came to a stop. And we lost contact with you as commissioners and maybe you weren't on the board then. And we lost contact with you and you'd lost contact with us. And it, it turned out I came back on the board after being on for 11 years, no, nine years. And because it was just difficult for people to get up here to do an interview. And that's what the commissioners always did was an interview. And so we did a, they talked to, I talked to them on the phone and, and a couple of other trustees did the same thing. And then we've just had a struggle in getting trustees and now we have an overabundance. But that in a nutshell is who we are and what we are. And we're, you know, way out there, I know. And we're not in town and we're not, you know, on the freeway north. But in my opinion, the Yale Library is really a crown jewel in this county. There is no doubt about it. We have a fire department that's right there. We have a library building that's right here, right in the middle. And then we have a school over to the side. They're all connected. And the school uses the library constantly as the rest of us do. And in closing, I'd just like to say our supervisor at the library, Leslie Miller, said that we're getting 1,000 patrons a month coming in. That can be the same patron, you understand? Some of us go in several times. That's a lot. And we're, as Jennifer can say, we're in the black. And we are to the point where this year, we've drilled a well because I think in the future, water is going to be an issue. And we're also black topping our parking lot in May. So that's who we are. If you have any questions, ask me, I'll be glad to tell. It's a great story of how we came into being. And I was thinking, I hope other library districts in the state, you know, maybe did the same thing that we did. I hope so. And because it's really worked out well for us.
Awesome.
Anything to add, Jennifer?
No, Kathy does a wonderful job and obviously a deeply committed citizen that, without which many things would not have happened. So we really appreciate all she's done for the community up there.
Yeah. Just real quick, to what do you attribute the overabundance and interest now? For people wanting to be trusted?
Oh, I, totally. I think it's awareness of what the library has to offer. It's, it's, if you're going to Portland, it's a 50-mile drive or more. We can order from the library anything that Fort Vancouver has. And that, that's, that's, for people who have disabilities, we offer books by mail. They can get books by, by mail. If they have computer access, they can access whatever, magazines. Oh, I could go on. Jennifer, you probably got a better handle on this.
Yeah, I think all of that, as well as just growth of more families in the area and discovering also a lot of homeschool community that are using the library as well. So whether they're checking out the physical items or accessing the hundreds of thousands of electronic items that we make available. It's just a really good, efficient way for people to access information of all kinds. And the Friends of the Library of the Yale Valley Library District, which is a separate 501(c)(3) that raises funds for programming and other things. They've also rebirthed recently. And so that's also caused, I think, more interest in what's going on.
I do too. And what were the two you, you guys recommend? What were the two members?
Alisa and Emelda.
Yes.
Those are the two I had up front, okay.
And would you like to get our, you know, when I, our minutes or not our minutes, but our agendas? I don't know.
Yeah. I'm good with moving ahead with your recommendation.
With the recommendation, I am, I am too. I appreciate you coming in. It's been, um, nice to hear the history of it. I actually, I'm a motorcycle guy and I, two or three, I don't know, when we had a decent day, I just took off and went up and had lunch up in Cougar. So I went right, right by it. It's a nice little, little building, yeah.
Well, libraries are growing. Woodland has a new library and our library is fairly new.
Yeah. Perfect. So I think I'm not seeing any objection to going with your guys' suggestions. So we'll appoint Alisa and Emelda to those positions. And we thank you for the time you've spent there.
Thank you.
Obviously.
If I could interrupt just for one minute, just, we'll have to know who you're appointing for the current vacancy. And then the second person wouldn't be appointed until Kathy's term expires in July.
You have a preference?
Well, Alisa has been coming to the meetings observing, so that would be, I think, a good option for the current vacancy. And then Emelda when Kathy's term is up.
Okay. Are they willing to serve in those positions listed, like for the treasurer?
There will be a new nomination for officers that happens in June, I believe.
Okay. Okay, so we'll appoint Lisa in the current position and
Emelda for the
for the July opening for Kathy.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks for, thanks for spending time with us today. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's been fun.
Well, thank you very much for your time and your service. Yeah. What I understand is we have one more item. You had a
Yeah. Like to call an executive session. They're showing to RCW 423110 for potential litigation.
Potential litigation?
How much time, you think? Probably 20 minutes.
20 minutes? Is Doug joining us? Okay. We will adjourn to executive session.
The board is extending the executive session an additional 10 minutes until 11:44.
Okay, we're back for executive session. No decisions were rendered. Anything else, gentlemen? Okay, we will adjourn, be back tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you.